Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the September 4th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Fair Oaks Ranch City Council. The time is 6:30 PM. We'll begin with a roll call. When I call your name, please say here or present. Mayor Maxton?
Here.
Councilmember Stroop?
Here.
Here we go. Here. Councilmember Roden?
Here.
Councilmember O'Vera?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Here.
Councilmember Parker?
Here.
And Councilmember Swarick?
Here.
With all members present, a quorum is declared.
Thank you, Amanda. Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Man, that sounded really good. Oh. As a reminder to everybody that's here tonight as part of the meeting, we do live broadcast this meeting. Would like to welcome everybody that's joining us here in the council chambers as part of the meeting, and would like to also welcome all of those that are joining us by the live broadcast. If you do, for those that are here at the meeting location, if you do get an opportunity to speak as part of the meeting tonight, I'd ask that everybody make comments from the podium. And the reason for that is that if you make comments from your seats, the individuals that are watching by live broadcast cannot hear the comments. And so we'd ask that everything be said over the mic up at the podium. And if you do get an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that you introduce yourself, if you're a resident, whether you're a resident of Fair Oaks Ranch or not, and if you're with an organization that's here speaking as part of the council meeting, just which organization that you are from. We had several people that signed up to speak tonight as part of Citizens to Be Heard, and in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council may not discuss or take action on any item which has not been posted on the agenda. And for all those that do get an opportunity to speak as part of Citizens to Be Heard, I'd ask that you limit your comments to five minutes. And I think Harold was the... Harold Prasodik, you were the first one to sign up.
All right.
Thank you, sir, for being here tonight.
Glad to be here again. Today, you'll be seeing a traffic analysis for the left turn lane into Front Gate. I caution you to wait with any decisions regarding this analysis. The report references the February 6 review by TSAC of three resident submissions about the Front Gate and Fair Oaks Parkway intersection. I'm the resident who made these three submissions. You directed staff to do several things: install double yellow lines and reflectors in the median, install intersection ahead warning signs, analyze the effectiveness of the changes, and then also consider dedicated left turn lane. The analysis of the traffic calming measures have not been reported yet, except for a crash unrelated to the left turn lane. That crash was labeled as a failure to yield, probably a westbound traffic, as I'll describe later. Speed monitoring radar was installed, recently removed, and the results have not yet been reported. Also, the reflectors in the median are gone, and the double yellow lines have faded away. So how is that effectiveness being analyzed if these changes are already missing? Once the radar monitor speeds are reported, I'll bet the speeds are in excess of 35 miles an hour, and 35 miles an hour is already too fast for this intersection. You deserve to know the results of the effectiveness of the changes that you directed before deciding on a left turn lane. This intersection is made more dangerous due to the westbound traffic coming over the hill. At peak times, it seems like an endless stream of cars coming over the hill. Other intersections along Fair Oaks Parkway have similar challenges for entering Fair Oaks Parkway, but this intersection is an accumulation of all those folks coming from upstream, as we are almost the last intersection before the freeway. Left turn report that you'll see today states that there were 23 crashes at this intersection over 10 years, and that's a lot. Only seven could be helped by left turn lane. So what about the other 16 crashes? That's 70%. My guess is that they are due to the westbound traffic, possibly at high speeds, and those crashes were probably labeled as failure to yield, just like the recent crash. Please consider stop signs. We have them at the other side of Front Gate, community, at Dietzel Corn and Square Gate, and it works well. Also note... Wait a minute. We have... Here we have a high-volume intersection with no stop signs. Also note that the left turn report will show a diagram of a vehicle turning left with this new configuration. That vehicle would hit a vehicle already in the median attempting to go east because the new effect... Plan effectively shortens the median. That problem is depicted in the diagram that you'll see. So I caution you about that left turn lane. The stop sign solution is shown to be the cheapest solution in this report, but it was determined not to be effective in helping the left turn lane situation, but that misses the bigger point of finding a solution to the 70% of the crashes in the intersection. And unfortunately, that was not the assignment of this report, and I wish it had been. Please pause to get the analysis before you proceed about the speeds and what's really happening there. Pay attention to the speeds that are occurring as measured by the radar, which hasn't yet been reported. Please install stop signs to stop these crashes. It's cheap, and it's effective. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Brown, you had signed up next.
Yeah, my name is Steve Brown. I'm a Fair Oaks resident. I've been here for 30 years now, and one of the reasons I'm here is because in that 30 years, I was working, working man, I was working at this time of the night, and I was never able to participate in city politics, and I always thought that it would be a good idea for me to participate and contribute. So in the past several months, we have formed a little band of civilians, call them the Cosossium, that is interested in rainwater harvesting in Fair Oaks Ranch. And I had presented one time in the past here, a little bit about our proposed program, is that the city of Fair Oaks Ranch would undertake a rainwater harvesting program in which they would actually rebate or subsidize residents' investment in rainwater harvesting equipment on their property. Now, these installations are actually quite expensive. We've done some research, and we found out that there is a number of rainwater harvesting programs across the state, and quite frankly, most of them are pretty Mickey Mouse, including the SARS program where they'll give you rebates for 150-gallon rain barrel, which, you know, quite frankly, is not going to amount to a drop in the snow. So what we're proposing is something on an order of several thousand gallons per resident, and the research shows that this investment could cost the resident about a dollar per gallon for just the tank, and then on top of that, you have the installation costs, you have the gutter costs, you have the piping if you want to pump it, so you're going to double that at least. So let's say a 2,000-gallon system, which could make a dent in your rainwater or your landscape needs, would cost $4,000, $5,000. Quite an investment for a resident. So we propose that the city of Fair Oaks Ranch use MDD funds, which are specified funds that are coming to the city every year, and wouldn't increase city taxes at all because they're already coming in, and we believe that a program of this nature would meet all MDD requirements. I am not a lawyer. I've talked with several people, though, and they also believe that it would enrich the community, and it would be a noble cause. So I'm here today basically saying, we've done some research. I have found the most progressive program in the state is, you guessed it, in Austin, that liberal city. And Austin has a program where they do rebate up to 50% of the cost, up to $1 per gallon of rainwater stored, which would be on a par with something that we're proposing that the city of Fair Oaks Ranch undertake. In fact, we would like to see it go a little bit farther, in that we would give up to 50%, which Austin does, they do up to 50%, up to $5,000 per household. So this would be quite an extensive undertaking, but it really needs the backing of city, city council, and it needs the approval of the MDD board, and it would take the resources of Fair Oaks to manage the program. So it would definitely have to be a city program. So we have a bunch of residents that are real interested, they all think it's a great idea, rah rah, but it really falls upon the city. So what I'm here tonight to ask is that if someone from our group is to approach one of you council members and ask for a meeting with you, we would like to be able to meet with the residents, and we can provide the place, the location, we can do it wherever you would like, but it would be, I think, prudent on your part to at least listen to what we have to say. We could come up with a program that works. Can I guarantee that it will work in the long run? No, but we can always write a sunset clause into any pilot program that we start, so that if it gets out of control, we can cut it off in a year or two years and say it's not working, or we have to make adjustments. So there's ways to do it, and we do believe that it's a noble cause for Fair Oaks Ranch. That's why I'm here tonight, to promote the program and just ask the city council people to lend us an ear. If we ask you to attend one of our meetings, please, you know, be open to that, because we're serious about this. We do think it would be beneficial for the city, not for just the next couple of years, but for years down the road, and diversify our water supply, because right now, we're dependent on two sources: Canyon Lake and our wells. And SARS, SARS is in on the act. But everybody would have to be a part of this program. If the city undertakes it, we'd have to make it available to SARS people, Fair Oaks Utilities people, people with wells, anyone in the city should be able to participate. And I know they have different rules for SARS, and people are going to say, well, SARS have different rules. Yep, that's... They do. So? So? They have different rules, and Fair Oaks has different rules. But anyways, I'm asking for your help in the future, and that's the basic of what we're doing. By the way, in Austin, I found out they have a... We call ours Project Forward for Fair Oaks Ranch Water and Rainwater Development. That's the name we came up with, Project Forward. It just so happens that Austin has Water Forward, and I said, oh, man, they copied us. Well, it turns out, they actually... They came up with that name almost a decade ago, back in 2014. So I guess I copied that, but I really didn't, because I don't know what their forward stands for, but ours stands for Fair Oaks Ranch Water and Rainwater Development. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. And Mr. Snokie?
I'm Ryan Shinaki. I'm resident of Fair Oaks Ranch. I live in the Front Gate neighborhood. So I was going to talk a little bit about the intersection that Harold talked about as well, at Fair Oaks Ranch Parkway and Front Gate. So getting a left turn lane in there is something I'd been talking to people about for several years. I ran for city council a few years ago. That was one of the things that I talked to several people about at the time. So I wanted to start out... I'm on the HOA board as well, so I wanted to start out by thanking you, because I get a lot of complaints being on a board, so I'm sure you guys hear complaints, complaints, very few, thank you. So thank you for authorizing the study to be done, for us to get the information about the intersection, for all the things we've learned about the intersection, and getting a proposal that we do get some kind of left turn lane in there. I think it's really important to give us some safety at that intersection. So what I noticed was that the proposal was to add funds to the budget for a hybrid left turn lane. So it wouldn't quite be as long as a normal left turn lane, but it would be a little less than half the cost, so a $90,000 investment. The full left turn lane would cost about 210, so a little over double, but I think the volume of traffic does justify the full left turn lane. So at the highest hour, there's 170 left turns into the neighborhood. That's 340% of the recommended amount of 50 left turns an hour for a dedicated left turn lane. So I think it's worth spending the money upfront to do the full left turn lane, although if you give us the hybrid one, we'll still be happy and we'll still be thankful, because it's definitely better than it is now. Now, another thing to note is that hour in question with 170 left turns was 4:30 to 5:30 PM. So we know that that's probably a lot of students from Champion High School coming home to Front Gate. So I think extra thought should go into who's using that left turn at that time, that it's the busiest, right? For all of us, for the people that are going the other way, who's having those high school kids turn in front of you, and for the high school kids turning in as well. So the last thing that I wanted to mention about the cost is, Front Gate is a gated neighborhood, so we pay for our own street maintenance. Fair Oaks Ranch does not pay for our street maintenance, but we pay the same assessment to the city as everybody else. So we don't get that street maintenance. We give probably a little over $1 million to the city every year in our taxes. So I think it's justified to give us a full left turn lane through there as well. So one other thing that I noticed when I was looking at that intersection today, so maybe something else to look at, is there's a mailbox as you're going towards I-10, right before the intersection. So the people turning right out of the neighborhood, I've noticed frequently, I can't see the traffic coming over the hill because of that mailbox. So I don't know what the rules are, just to kind of put it out there as a bug in the air as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh-huh.
And appreciate all three of you all being here tonight and providing comments as part of tonight's meeting. These were the only individuals that we had signed up to speak as part of Citizens to Be Heard. Is there anybody else here tonight that didn't get an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak? Okay. We'll move on with our presentation item tonight. And if I get Jason and Brian to join me up at the podium. You're looking sharp.
Oh, thank you, sir.
You know, nationally, each year in September, sometime in September is celebrated as the National Information Technologies... Technological Professionals Day. And this year, that day falls on September 16th. And so as we look at these recognition days, I mean, one, it's to highlight, because a lot of these individuals work behind the scenes, and we don't get a full understanding of what they go through every day to accomplish their jobs. And the second thing that we're looking at is, we want to recognize the great efforts, especially of the team that we have here at Fair Oaks Ranch. So we have Brian Lejeune, who's our IT manager, and Jason McDonald, who is our network specialist, that head up the IT team that we have here at Fair Oaks Ranch. Now, overall, their responsibilities include overseeing the operations and repairs of our computers, our applications, storage, networking, infrastructure, and processes to create, store, and exchange electronic data. Simple sentence, but there's a lot in that sentence that y'all take care of every day. And as part of that, all of us that get the pleasure of using the system that's guarded by this team, get to take the cybersecurity training every year, and I wanted to thank y'all very much for that opportunity to go through that and accomplish that. So, yeah, a lot of people are laughing, because a lot of people go through it. But you know, as I... And honestly, I kind of made a joke out of it. But honestly, as I've gone through this training now for several years, there's a lot that I have learned, that not only helps me in protecting the systems that we have here at City Hall, but has trained me in things that I need to do to even protect my home system. So yes, I do appreciate what you do, although it is sometimes painful to go through the training. Right?
Yep.
We have multiple systems used by... Right here at City Hall. So obvious are the networks used by staff and council daily for our communications. We use our computer systems and email, but also the systems used by our court, our water and wastewater systems, our water billing, our finance, and our police department, all has separate systems that they utilize. And it's important to... Many of the systems have personal information located on, and others control the operations of our essential services for the city. I can't tell you how important it is that we do protect these systems, and these individuals that are standing behind me or beside me spend every day protecting those systems so that we don't get hacked or our personal information invaded upon. And I can tell you that they take their job responsibilities very seriously. And many times, to upgrade these protections that we needed on our system, require patching of the systems. And to not disrupt our City Hall operations, they conduct this patching late at night or routinely on a Sunday afternoon when we're all home with our families. And so would like to say thank you for what y'all do every day to keep these systems safe. And then the other thing that, you know, anything that goes wrong with our computer systems, you call these guys, and they're there in a heartbeat to fix it. And, you know, we had a six-hour power outage two weeks ago, and I came into the office and got on my computer, and it wouldn't start. And, you know, I did all the things that I was trained to do. I reconnected the power cord, I checked the surge protector, I turned it on and off, actually even disconnected the power cord from the surge protector and plugged it into the wall, and nothing worked. And so finally, I picked up the phone, I called Jason, and Jason says, I'll be down there in a second. And he was, he was there in five seconds. He walked up to my computer, he unplugged the power cord from the back of the computer, plugged it in, and turned it on. So not only do they do a great job, but they come with a golden touch also. So thank y'all very much. But please join me in recognizing these individuals as September 16th and acknowledging all that they do for the city, and please reach out to them on that day. I did put together a short proclamation that I'd like to read off for them, that we'll present to them. The city of Fair Oaks Ranch, whereas National Information Technology Professionals Day has been celebrated on the third Tuesday of every September since 2015, and whereas this year, it falls on September 16th, 2025. And whereas the city of Fair Oaks Ranch recognizes the IT experts who ensure the city's computers, their applications, storage, networking, infrastructure, and the processes to create, store, and secure and exchange all forms of electronic data are performing at optimal levels. And whereas the city of Fair Oaks Ranch, the IT department consists of two employees, the IT manager, Brian Lejeune, and network specialist, Jason McDonald. And whereas the IT department oversees the software programs for the city with the goals of ensuring smooth, efficient, around-the-clock operations for all city departments, including city council, administration, city secretary, court, finance, public safety, and public works. And whereas the IT department provides 24/7 support for telecommunications systems, cellphones, internet firewalls, servers, desktops, laptops, camera systems, tablet, switches, et cetera, for both office and field personnel. And whereas the IT department continues to focus on identifying and meeting new challenges in key areas such as cybersecurity, state and federal guidelines for data management and security, and shifting technology trends, et cetera. So now and therefore, the city council of the city of Fair Oaks Ranch does hereby designate September 16th, 2025, as IT Professionals Day, and I urge all citizens to express their appreciation to our IT team members for their dedication and commitment to the Fair Oaks Ranch City Council, all of our employees and our residents. So thank you both very much for what you do. Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Jason. Did you want to make any comments, or?
Yeah, sure.
All right. It's all yours.
Yeah. We appreciate the kind words and the acknowledgement in the proclamation, and it's a pleasure serving the residents and city staff. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. That completes the presentations we have tonight. We'll move on to our consent agenda. We have six items on the consent agenda for tonight. We have six items on the consent agenda for tonight. First is the approval of the August 21st, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting Minutes. Second, approval of the second reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, Texas, amending the comprehensive plan to change the land use classification from rural residential to neighborhood residential for approximately 344.6 acres, generally located north of the intersection of Rolling Acres Trail and Ammon Road and bordered by Ammon Road to the south and the west. Third item, approval of the second reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, Texas, designating the zoning district for approximately 344.6 acres, generally located north of the intersection of Rolling Acres Trail and Ammon Road and bordered by the Ammon Road to the south and west as neighborhood residential. The fourth item, approval of the second reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, Texas, providing for the extension of the Fair Oaks Ranch city limits by the annexation of approximately 2.923 acre tract of land located at 329 Ammon Road, Kendall County. And the fifth item, approval of a resolution amending Resolution Number 2023-46 to affirm the status of donations received for the Dietzel Corn Sidewalk Project and direct the donation from S.A. Front Gate LLC and its affiliates donation to be deposited into the Tree Mitigation Fund for tree mitigation purposes. And last, approval of Councilmember Stroop's absence from the July 17th Regular City Council meeting. Is there any council member that would like to remove any of these items from consent to consideration? Everybody's good? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Emily, and a second from Scott? All in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. Thank y'all. And with that, we'll move on to, we have two consideration items on the agenda tonight. First is the consideration and the possible action of approving a resolution by the City Council of the City of Fair Oaks Ranch, Texas, approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Fair Oaks Ranch and the Fair Oaks Ranch Homeowners Association for conducting multiple patriotic celebrations and a Veterans Day event at the Peace Tree on Fair Oaks Parkway, and other provisions repealing the 2021 Memorandum of Understanding and subsequent amendment, providing for an effective date and authorize the City Manager to execute the memorandum. And Carol, you going to walk us through the?
Yes, sir.
Specifics on this?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Council, Mayor, and attendees. Carol Van Zandt, Assistant City Manager. So, back in 1990, there was a desire among the 800 residents to create an annual community event to bring homeowners together. Ms. Delec Par, a FORA board member, brought forth an idea to the FORA board and to the City Council for a tree lighting event. In November 1990, the City Council approved FORA's request to pay and maintain holiday decorations and lighting of the live oak tree, live oak tree, at the fire station on Fair Oaks Parkway in honor of the city military personnel deployed to Desert Storm and to commemorate the start of the holiday season. The event was set for the first Sunday after Thanksgiving, and at the event, the tree was formally named the Peace Tree, and a plaque honoring the military personnel was placed at the base of the tree. This tradition of Santa and elves arriving with toys for the children and attendees enjoying country club treats continued until November 2021. The City Council approved a FORA proposal to move the annual celebration to start on Veterans Day and go through the New Year's Eves, New Year Eves Day. A memorandum of understanding outlining all the scopes, roles, and responsibilities of each party was approved. As the celebration was widely attended and welcomed, in March 2022, the city received a FORA proposal to expand the lighting of the Peace Tree to include Memorial Day, July the Fourth, and Patriot Day. City Council, via an amended MOU, agreed with the proposed new holidays and further solidified each party's responsibilities. Recently, the city received a FORA proposal that includes improved lighting and a redesign of the landscaping area around the Peace Tree. Using permanent lighting will provide efficiency and continuity. Lights will be installed and maintained by FORA contractors and not city employees. The new landscape design, as depicted here, will reduce water needs and minimize maintenance work by both FORA and the city employees. The landscaping redesign will be paid by FORA. There will be more hardscaping rather than general grounds of grass and other landscaping Lastly, the proposal includes additional patriotic lighting. I'm sorry. Lastly, the proposal includes six additional patriotic lighting celebrations, Armed Forces Day, D-Day, Flag Day, Purple Heart Day, Constitution Day, and Pearl Harbor Day. In summary, the proposed MOU authorizes the redesign of the Peace Tree area and the additional celebrations. It allows FORA, its volunteers, and contractors to enter onto our property. It clarifies that all work, decorations, and lights will be considered as a city donation. And it provides the city's standard insurance and indemnity provisions will be used. Given the multiple changes and additions in this proposal, staff recommends repealing the existing MOUs and approving a resolution authorizing a new MOU. For representative with us tonight is DeeDee Manizas. I understand, Suzy. I'm sorry, Suzy, I didn't see you walk in. My apologies. Suzy Richardson and DeeDee Manizas are here. We are happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the redesign, the lighting, the permanent lighting, or the MOU in general. Thank you.
Council, any questions? All good? All good? Any questions from anyone here tonight, reference? All right?
Perfect. Thank you.
Good job explaining, Carol. can I get a motion to approve a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Fair Oaks Ranch and the Fair Oaks Ranch Homeowners Association for conducting multiple patriotic celebration and a Veterans Day event at the Peace Tree on Fair Oaks Parkway and other provisions, and repealing the 2021 Memorandum of Understanding and subsequent amendment?
No move.
I think Jonathan?
Second.
Any other discussion from council?
Being the one that's usually on the ladder hanging the old lights, I really like this.
With the motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Thanks, Carol. DeeDee and Suzy, thank y'all for being here tonight.
We thank you very much for including it. We hope to go ahead and continue making you as nice as possible.
Next, we'll move on to our second consideration tonight, item tonight, which is the consideration and possible action of approving a resolution amending the City of Fair Oaks Ranch's personnel policies. And Jim?
Good evening, Mayor, council. Jim Williams, Assistant City Manager. Just for a reference, I'm back again. I know we just went through a big round of personnel policies update. We're in maintenance mode right now, and we hope to be continuing to do that. Not every council meeting, but, you know, every few months or so, we'll bring back changes that we need to address. Tonight, I've got seven specific topics. Not all these chapters we're going to go through in, in minuscule detail, they're very specific topics in each of these chapters. Some of them are housekeeping, a few of them are pretty substantial policy calls. So let me get started on them. So, Chapter Three, we're just suggesting to add a new section to that. It's eligibility for rehire, basically explaining to managers, hiring managers and HR, what the criteria are in evaluating which former employees to bring, that we will allow to come back into the organization. Basically, if they served, if they served well in their last employment stint, they left on good terms, generally bring them back. If they left on bad terms, probably won't want to bring them back. It's, I know that's a simple explanation, but that's the gist of the proposed change. Types of employment, adding, the suggestion is to add a new section to 4.01, the categories. We have three categories of employment right now. We have full-time, regular, part-time, regular, and temporary. Each of those employment types have certain category criteria that classifies them. A new category would be the unpaid intern, unpaid intern. So an unpaid intern is basically, a, a department wants to enter some kind of training arrangement with another agency, say maybe the police department with a, with a college or university training undergraduate students who are going through a criminal investigation training, they need to do an internship somewhere. We'd have an agreement with that agency. We'd bring that person on as an unpaid intern. We wouldn't pay them, they'd be subject to a minimal hour that they could work and have a set start and stop time. And the only benefit they would get is they would be eligible for workers' comp, which we do that for volunteers also. So unpaid interns would be a new category. Work schedules, this one, once we put it in motion, it was a significant change. We did the big policy push back the spring, and almost immediately, the supervisors, the frontline supervisors, especially in utilities maintenance, noticed a discrepancy, or maybe not a discrepancy, more of an issue. And the gist of the issue was, we have a lot of, thanks to IT and what they deliver, we can do a lot of work off-site, like with pump maintenance, checking utilities, things like that. They can do it remotely. What we were doing is we're paying folks who were checking and turning on a pump remotely at home, clicking on, they get automatically two hours of pay for that at the overtime rate. So what we're doing is we're, we're proposing in this section to split that out, so if they actually have to come back to the shop, then they get the two hours of minimum pay. But if they're at home, they'll get paid in 15-hour increments. So that's just a 15-minute increments. I say 15-hour?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm getting over the fluke. Okay, here we go. Holidays, so this was proposed during the budget cycle. City Manager Huesengay mentioned that. This is substantial policy change. The proposal is to add Juneteenth, National Independence Day, as a new recognized holiday. That would bring the city's recognized holidays up to 14. Had Finance run the fiscal impact on it. The estimated burden to the budget is negligible, about $5,300. And for the, and the reason for that is because we pay our police officers, whether they work the holiday or not, we pay them the holiday pay because it's, the way their schedules line out, it's just too disruptive to kind of, to try to schedule that. So we just, we just pay it. Health and safety, this was another one that we changed, a big one that we changed in the, in the policy push. We implemented a mandatory drug and alcohol test post-accident. We've had a couple of incidents, well, a few incidents since that policy went into effect, and we, you get really hung up on this property damage thing. Any minor little scrape to a vehicle, we're sending someone off to, or a piece of equipment, we're sending someone off to a drug testing lab for a drug test, which is very expensive. And then while we're waiting for the results of that test, they're on paid admin leave, waiting for the results, and nothing, nothing's happening. We're finding that, that they're not intoxicated, it was just an accident, it's just an incident. So what we're proposing to do is remove property damage from the definition of one of the criteria that would drive a mandatory test, and then lean back on the other two as any injuries. And the new one, the new criteria we added on the last one was reasonable suspicion. And reasonable suspicion is we have set a criteria that supervisors, or very objective criteria, that supervisors have to observe. We can't just guess at this, we have to document it and observe it. So I checked with other cities who have kind of the same mindset about drug testing, and Bernie was one of them, they went through the same thing, and they removed property damage out of their personnel policy also. So we would be consistent with their policy. Chapter 13, this is separations, this is a housekeeping thing. Our, our initial employment period, the probationary period, is called initial employment period. Somehow introductory period stayed in this, we just need to clean it up real quick. And travel, this is a question from Finance. Right now, what happens is we have, when, when employees go on travel for trainings or lectures or whatever they need to do to represent the city, we can pay advanced per diem, but if something happens and they don't go, we don't have a written mechanism in place to pull back that per diem, so this is what that would do. All right, so next steps, as quick as I can, I'll publish the updates if, as council approves. We'll get them out for staff training, and then we'll just continue to keep up this regular maintenance of our personnel policies. And I'm happy to take questions.
Council questions? All right. Any questions from anyone here tonight? With that, can I get a motion to approve a resolution amending the City of Fair Oaks Ranch's personnel policies?
Second.
From Emily and Ruben? And any other comments from council? With the motion on the table, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Thanks, Jim. That completes the consideration items that we had on for the agenda tonight. We have two workshop items. The first one is a summary of the Unified Development Code Policy Amendments. And Jessica, are you going to go through these with us? So as part of this, I mean, we're going to review what you've already reviewed with the PNZ. Is there anything specific that you're looking for from council tonight as we go through these?
Yes, where staff is asking just for feedback on any of the amendments, and then if it's okay to move it forward to public hearing.
Okay.
So with that, thank you, Mayor Maxton. Good evening, council members and attendees. My name is Jessica Rilucio, City Planner for the City of Fair Oaks Ranch. This is a workshop for the complete proposed Unified Development Code amendments and the final opportunity to recommend amendments of the UDC. To briefly review how we got here, in October 2024, the City Council held a workshop to review the Planning and Zoning Commission's proposed amendments and provided direction on defined problems within the categories of screening, conservation development alternative, subdivision design, site developments, uses, trees, and signs. Additional recommendations by staff include drainage and block length subdivision design. The identified problem for screening was consistency in the UDC for screening standards to be opaque or solid. The proposed UDC, sorry, council requested a recommendation for this, and the proposed UDC amendments were to enhance all landscape screening to opaque. The next identified problem was related to conservation development alternative. Conservation development alternative allows flexibility in design of the development for applying environmental preservation in the subdivision, for example, placement of buildings to various topography. The identified problem was that the minimum blended average of lot sizes has no specified minimum lot size. Also, the density calculation needed to be refined. Council's recommendation was to incorporate a minimum lot size instead of blended averages. The proposed UDC amendments were to remove the non-technical standards of blended averages, show requirements for maximum gross density and minimum lot size, and clarify the total net lot area calculations and minimum requirements. Next, the identified problem for subdivision design, specifically street. Next, the identified problem for subdivision design, specifically street frontage, was that lots served by private wells or private septic systems are required to have a minimum street frontage of a hundred and fifty feet or two hundred feet. However, it is missing clarification how this addresses cul-de-sacs minimum street frontage. Council wanted a recommendation to address this. The proposed UDC amendments incorporated minimum street frontage for lots on cul-de-sacs as a hundred and feet. Next, the identified problem related to block lengths of subdivisions, which is the distance of block face measured along the center line of a right-of-way from one street intersection to another midpoint or intersection. The UDC states the maximum block length of eight hundred feet in neighborhood residential zone, which is creating a need for additional street infrastructure to meet the maximum block length requirement. This is a new proposed amendment by staff, and no previous city council direction was provided. The proposed UDC amendments for this included enhancing the maximum block length to a thousand two hundred feet maximum block length. This prevents many street intersections and crossways from one street to the next street. The identified problem for site development applications for plat waivers and variances is how they are used interchangeably. Definitions, processes, criteria were needed to be clarified. Council requested for a recommendation, and to ensure clarity and distinctness, the proposed UDC amendments defined plat waiver as plat waivers being waivers of the standards required for plat approval, and must be requested during the plat submittal process, such as lot dimensions, plat notes, easements, whereas variances relate to zoning standards such as setbacks, landscaping, or other development standards. Next, the identified problem for table four point two uses were that certain, certain land uses are missing large groups of uses that can be separated, and unidentified off-street parking requirements. Council recommended inclusion of land uses, separation of the large groupings, and adding off-street parking requirements for each use. The proposed UDC amendments incorporated missing land uses, condensed and enhanced parking standards into one table with the respective land use. Next, the identified problem for conditional uses was the absence of standards for recreational maintenance facilities, which could lead to adjacency concerns when located next to an adjacent residential parcel. Council recommended a recommendation on this criteria, and the proposed UDC amendments included a recreational maintenance facility as a conditionally permitted land use, which requires reviewing the design and placement of associated building and storage. Next, the identified problem relates to trees and tree preservation requirements. Council recommended current tree mitigation requirements relative to tree circumference and number of trees without creating new regulations, and confirmed provisions aligned with the city's existing tree ordinance. The proposed UDC amendments ensured regulations regarding tree circumference regulations are clear and concise, and confirmed that provisions do not conflict with the city's existing Next, the identified problems for signs were that previous statutory UDC amendments did not reflect new statutes from the Texas Legislative Sessions relative to signs. There is no allowance for variance in the signs chapter, and a request to enhance regulations on size, type, and location. Council requested to implement the statutes accordingly, recommended signage size, type, and location of signs, and provide an allowance for variance. The proposed UDC amendments reorganized condensed and simplified sections, incorporated statutory updates, clarified sign, size, number, and location, added a variance process, and a thorough review of the prohibited and temporary signs was complete. Also, since posting this agenda, staff conducted an additional review and incorporated changes. Those changes are in the additional packet that was in your place tonight, and it's highlighted in yellow. In particular, table ten point one, in the second to last page of the new packet, it does show that political signs is enhanced to have its own section for clarity, and it's also broken down into private, public right-of-way, and polling sites, just for Next, the identified problems for drainage and erosion control was conflicting, was that there was conflicting language within section nine point seven regarding storm water release rates. This is a new proposed amendment by staff that was not previously presented to city council, and the proposed UDC amendments were to remove the conflicting language regarding peak runoff control and mitigation. The next steps include, on September eleventh, PNZ would hold a public hearing, and on the proposed amendments, to receive public testimony, and make a recommendation to city council on the amendments. Then on October second, city council would conduct a public hearing to receive public testimony, and possibly act on the first reading of an ordinance amending the UDC. Lastly, October sixteenth, city council would act on the second reading of an ordinance amending the UDC. Again, this is a final workshop of the UDC amendment, staff is seeking feedback on whether to move the item forward to public hearings, and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Questions from council? Pretty thorough.
I have a.
Yes, ma'am.
On the chart, at the very back of the chart, under the section where it has prohibited signs, are there definitions for these, all of these, somewhere?
Yes, there are definitions from, I know definitely for most of these, I can confirm if each one of them is either identified or has its own definition.
And I only ask because, like, I don't know what a portable sign is, I feel like that could be political sign, any, you know, any kind of sign that you can remove at any time, you know what I mean? So that would, I definitely think we need a definition of that, if there is not one.
Okay.
But some of these others, I would just encourage you guys to take a look and make sure that there's a definition for these, because there could be multiple interpretations.
Okay, we can definitely do that.
There are, and like Jessica mentioned, some are defined, some are not, just like the use table in four point two, we list a plethora of uses, some have definitions, some for a variety of reasons. We try to make them as, as plain language as possible, but, but the code calls for it in several sections, where if there is a, a difference of opinion or interpretation, then the city manager determines what the definition is. Bear in mind, too, that most of the prohibited sides apply to commercial, commercial properties. The residential uses, as you see in that use in the residential, is pretty widespread, pretty open, so there's not a lot of restrictions on residential signs, other than the size.
Yeah, and I was only really referring to the ones that are on the list of prohibited, only because I feel like those are going to be the ones that you'd run into, potentially run into more issues with.
Okay.
Else about that, or is that loophole still kind of there?
What, the trees, what was the question?
So I, I met with Scott last week, and we talked about, let's say that I have a ranch, and you're a developer, right? So you want to develop my ranch, you come to me and say, hey, let me give you fifty thousand, you go ahead and cut all the trees off of it, and then sell it to me, and we'll put in for rezoning and everything. And if we, if you and I did it that way, we would not, we would develop the property and not be liable for the trees lost, right? So there is a loophole in it, the way it sits right now. My question last week was, can we close that loophole by saying, any site plan must pay to, pay to replace, and not necessarily at, it can have its own price list or whatever, but replace the number of trees that were noted in the last twelve months or something, you know, can we, can we go back and retroactively? And that, I don't know, I think there was going to be some more digging to see if that could be done.
Right, so yeah, so a couple of things on trees, and Jessica may have mentioned that, I'm not, I mean, I may have missed it, but as part of the changes, besides clarifying the circumferences and that type of thing, the proposed language does provide the, the language based on council direction that private residences are not subject to tree mitigation and, and preservation requirements. So that will be part of the PNZ's public hearing next week, which will come back to you next month. As to council member Swaric's question, it was essentially, can this, for, for developments, can the city go, essentially, like you mentioned, go retroactive on, on tree preservation to before the time of the plat, which is what the current language calls, we talked about that just on Tuesday, we did for that question to, to the city attorney, and not to put him on the spot, I'm not sure if he's had time to fully vet that or not, but that was, that was the question, on developments, can the tree go retroactive on tree preservation requirements?
Oh, I did speak with Jessica earlier about this, and you still have a tree ordinance in effect, so all those private residences aren't subject, they're exempt, they still have to follow all the guidelines and go through the process to make sure that they're not cutting down oak trees and, you know, spreading oak wilt, that kind of thing, they may not be subject to all the contracted registration fees and registering with the city, but they would still have to show and follow all the guidelines for oak wilt prevention and spreading, so they would still have to show that they're not doing that. So retroactively punishing somebody is probably not advisable, but they'd still have to go through the process and show the city that they're not cutting down an oak tree and spreading oak wilt, so they should still be checking in.
You can cut the oak tree down as long as it's not in oak wilt season, right? I mean, yeah, it doesn't seem, tell me how that makes me, as a developer, pay fees on these trees that I, that I need gone, because I want to put whatever there, right? But I want to put a bunch of houses there, whatever I want to put there, some business, and I'm not wanting to pay the fee. Let's say you own the, you own the land, right? So I come to you and I say, hey, man, look, I'll buy it, but these trees, they got to go, because the city's gonna, it's gonna cost me an arm and a leg, it's not feasible, right? And we want the trees as citizens, you know, we don't want anybody coming through and clearcutting, you know, forty acres, and then all of a sudden, it's just ugly out there. So I, so I give you some money to, I pay for you to cut the trees down, and pay you a little bit to make it worth your while, and then you sell me the land, right? And now I'm, I have a piece of land under contract that has no trees, so these fees are not applicable to me, you know, so tell me how that, tell me how that's locked down.
Well, I'll get with Jessica and look at the specifics of, of the proposed amendment and see that, that is shut down completely, but again, there are certain remedies in there, so I think we would just want to make sure that those remedies are merged.
Well, one of the remedies is a financial tag, right, to each tree, and that's, that's what I, I want to make sure that, if that's the purpose of it, because it's still there, you know, we're not removing that, that provision.
Well, and then additionally, so we don't, council direction, we are removing the regulations of private property residential lots, and so there would be nothing, right now, to my knowledge, but we will review it to stop a property from doing it.
That's right.
And then if we want to go back and kind of get some form of preparation, it would be very difficult to see what trees were there in the last two weeks, two years, two months, without a formal.
It would be difficult, but it could be done, and for the, for the cost of the trees, I mean, it, it could be done. I think it would be an effective deterrent to at least say, hey, we're going to go ride around on a four-wheeler and, and look, you know, and if it looks like you clearcut these things, we're going to call in some experts and see, you know, what was here before and, and what you guys know. And it could be something that, you know, if the land changes hands, then it goes into effect, or just, just something there, you know, to, to make it less appealing for me to come buy your ranch and just cut all the trees, have you cut all the trees off before I buy it.
I think in most cases, it's, and Post Oak is a great example, where most times it's, they're incentivized to maintain trees, because it's, it's, you know, for the character of the neighborhood, especially in this area, where we, we obviously greatly value that tree cover, and it aligns with the rest of the property, so I think in most cases, developers are not going to want to do that, but as far as actively preventing that, that's, that's, as Matt mentioned, we're just going to have to do more research on what the options are. I don't have that answer right now.
So developers may not want to do that, but if they're financially prohibited from developed property, that loophole gives them the financial incentive to buy that property and, and go forward, having those trees cut down. And Jonathan, that's a topic, I think it was last year, and this topic came up, and I raised, I recognize that loophole, and I raised it, I think with Kelsey at the time, and I don't know if it was a workshop, but we talked about a potential ordinance on tree preservation that would apply to individual homeowners, and I think I was the only one, maybe one or two of us were, maybe, not in favor, but like, willing to look into it. So I think maybe that could be an avenue with some sort of new ordinance, if that's something you want to look into. I'm in favor of that as well.
I'm there, and, and like I say, I'm all for property owner rights, and if it's your ranch, and you just got an oak tree out there that you just want to cut down just because it's yours, you know, and you've had this land for twenty years, and you're going to have it for another twenty, that's none of my business, you know? But if you're going to sell it to Kmart, and Kmart's going to come in and put a little mini store right there, and, well, they need some of these trees gone, that's different, you know, I feel like people would be pretty upset to find out that that happened.
I, my, my recommendation, if it's legally possible, would, would be something along the lines of, if the, if the residential property changes hands to a non-residential owner, within, you know, you, you then retroactively look back twelve months, or whatever it ends up being, six months, twelve months, and see if there was any kind of significant tree removal, and if there was, you still, that new owner, that new commercial owner, will then still be subject to the tree mitigation fees of whatever they would have paid had it changed hands properly.
We're in agreeance?
Yeah.
Okay, we can look into that more, and that could be a possible future ordinance and item, and then currently with this item for the UDC, we can go ahead and move forward with that, or is there anything in particular to these amendments being proposed that we would like to include, incorporate?
Would that need to be included with the change, or could that be something done later?
It's something that, if, if we had an answer, it's something that the council can change, basically at any time through the public hearing process. Now, the council, now PNZ has their public hearing scheduled for next week, that recommendation will come to the council next month in October, so at that time, the council could opt to make any number of changes to the, to the, to the UDC, including, including something along those lines.
What if that went through as is, but couldn't council at some point consider an ordinance that would affect that provision, and then the provision would change after an ordinance is passed, if it's passed?
Yes.
That one little.
Absolutely, yeah, we've been doing these, obviously omnibus amendments, but they don't all have to be that way.
Yeah, I just, I just think that we need a little bit of science involved in how we would, you know, look for the tree that was, used to be there, it's kind of like the mailbox used to be, yeah.
Well, the one thing is, we don't have a ton of property in Fair Oaks that is yet to be developed that potentially would be subject to something like that, right? Like, if I sell my house, no, no, no Kmart's coming in at eighty-five thirty-one Fairway Green, so, you know, there's only certain properties that would.
Anytime, anytime I hear about us getting involved in cutting down my trees, it's going to get my hackles up, and I think everybody else's as well. it's going to get my hackles up and I think everybody else's as well.
And I agree with you, but the, the purpose of this is it's not, you're not doing it because it's your tree. You're doing it because you want it to be someone else's. Yeah.
Yeah, they would have to go through the rezoning and the flume process.
Right.
Scott, I, I think you understand the intent of what we're, we're trying to look at here. Since this would relate to property owners, is this more of an ordinance? Or is this something that would need to be put within the, the UDC?
I mean.
I guess first.
There's potential either way, but it would probably fit better in the UDC. And, and I think the natural place is under tree, the, the tree, the tree section itself, chapter eight, eighth, right?
In the UDC?
I mean, I agree with you and to Ruben's point, I mean, we've looked for ways. How do we, how do we protect the trees that we have here on the ranch today? And without infringing on personal property rights. And I think that's the, the challenge that we ran into. But yeah, I think we all have a love for the oak trees and we want to find a way that we can preserve them. And it was just finding a way that, a way that we could do that that wasn't infringing on the rights of personal property owners. And I don't know that we ever got an answer on that. I don't know if there is an answer. So. Do what?
I like Jonathan's answer.
Well, we'll definitely take a harder look at it. Again, you have the language that will appear before P and Z next week. Again, they're scheduled to make the recommendation. And that's, that's not to say that the council can't change or append to that recommendation, but this is based on the previous council direction, what Jessica presented tonight is what P and Z will see next week.
So we'll continue forward with the same verbiage that you showed tonight.
Yeah, I don't think this would change anything in the current recommendation. The question is whether we want to add something to it.
Got it.
That would reflect this.
Okay. Everybody good with that? Okay. Any other areas that you saw were challenges? Nope. Any questions or concerns from anyone here tonight? All right. So based on that, what was presented, we'll go to the P and Z for their public hearing. Is it next week, the 11th?
It's next week, right?
September 11th.
Yes.
And for their recommendation back to council.
Yes, correct. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. And the next workshop item that we had on the agenda tonight is the left turn lane analysis for Fair Oaks Parkway at the front gate intersection. And Grant, I think you've been doing all the work on this one.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Grant Watanabe, the Public Works Director. And Mr. Prosthetic did provide much of the background on this item, but I'll, I'll quickly recap. Back in February of '25, the TSAC did receive and review several submissions for various safety improvements at the Fair Oaks Parkway and Front Gate intersection. These were to address concerns related to speeding site distance and pedestrian crossings. The TSAC did unanimously recommend the following measures, all of which have been completed. They included installation of the double yellow lines and reflectors in the median, installing intersection ahead warning signs on the parkway, moving the stop bar forward at the front gate entrance. And then lastly, requesting that city council consider doing a traffic study for the intersection. Also, back in February, the city council did concur with the TSAC's recommendations and did direct staff to evaluate the feasibility of constructing a dedicated left turn lane from the parkway into front gate. For reference, the full tech memo from our general engineering consultant is attached to this item as exhibit B. And my presentation will just cover some key sections of that report. So back on May 16th, and this is before school let out, our GEC did collect turning movement counts at the subject intersection. And the results are shown in the inset diagram, which represents the intersection. There we go. So the first number in this inset diagram represents the morning peak hour, which is 7:30 to 8:30 a.m. And the second number in parentheses represents the afternoon or P, PM peak hour, which was 4:30 to 5:30 p.m. Now, you'll notice that the morning peak hour volume was 76 left turn movements. That's cars turning from the parkway into front gate. In the afternoon, that peak hour volume was 170 cars or vehicles making that same left turn movement. The movement front, from front gate onto Fair Oaks Parkway was a lot less. There were 10 cars in the morning peak hour and then 12 hour, 12, just 12 cars making that left turn lane onto the parkway in the afternoon peak hour. One thing to note is the total major road volume. The total major mode volume is the volume of vehicles on Fair Oaks Parkway. So adding several of those numbers up, there were 909 cars in the morning and 1,074 cars in the afternoon. So our UDC adopts the City of San Antonio's UDC when it comes to traffic engineering standards. So in the San Antonio UDC, whenever the left turn volume exceeds 50 cars during the peak hour, a left turn lane is warranted. And if you recall, in the morning, we had 76 cars during the morning peak hour. And then in the afternoon, we had 170 cars in the afternoon peak hour. And both of those numbers exceed 50. So according to that, that criteria, a left turn lane is warranted. We also looked at the National Cooperative Highway Research Program Report 745. That report's entitled Left Turn Accommodations at Unsignaled Intersections. And this is a nationally recognized standard. This standard uses two criteria to determine whether a left turn war, lane is warranted. The first is the left turn lane, the, the number of cars making left turn on, during that peak hour, which is similar to San Antonio. That's the first column in this table. And the second column, which is what kind of applies to us because it's a three-leg intersection and it's the major road volume. Again, this is the volume during that peak hour on Fair Oaks Parkway. So in our case, the bottom line in this table applies. We had more than 50 left turn lanes during the peak, turns in that peak hour. And we also had more than 100 vehicles on that major road volume. So even according to this national standard, a left turn lane is warranted. So we looked at a total of seven different left turn alternatives and I'll quickly go through them. The first one was an always stop installation of stop signs would be low cost, but it would have a negative impact on the level of service and cause downstream impacts. If you recall, we have 909 cars coming through in the, in the peak hour in the morning and over 1,000 in the afternoon. And if everyone has to stop at that intersection, we'll have significant backups. The second option was just to simply re-stripe the eastbound lane to kind of divide it into a left turn lane and a through lane. It's kind of what we have right now where cars are going off, onto the shoulder or onto the, into the dirt, slightly into the dirt to get around a car making a left turn lane. But this doesn't really change the situation. It just puts a stripe between those two lanes. It improves safety slightly, but really doesn't improve much. I'm going to really, I'm going to skip the hybrid left turn lane and the full left turn lane for now. And then we'll come back to that after I go through the other options. But the next option was the hooded left in and a hooded left out. These are fairly more expensive options. Normally you construct a raised median out of concrete and you have a, really a dedicated left turn in or the other option, a left turn out. These would have negative impacts on the level of service and also have downstream impacts because if you have a hooded left turn in, then you can't make a left turn coming out of front gate. You can only make that left turn in. And then the same, same with the left turn, hooded left turn out. You can only make a left turn coming out of front gate and you can't make a left turn going into front gate. And then the seventh option we looked at was just full closure, putting up a barrier in the meeting, prevent, preventing any movements, left turn movements at the intersection. No one's for this option. Nobody wants to put up any barriers. So, but it was, it was considered, you completely stopped any of those left turn movements. So getting back to the top two ranked options, again, they were the hybrid left turn lane. This was what staff recommended and it's kind of shown in more detail on the next slide. We believe it presented the, the most balanced solution in terms of safety, cost and operational improvement. The estimated cost to implement it was about $90,000. The full left turn lane, while it does present a higher degree of safety and operational improvement, it does come with a higher cost. We did estimate it at about $215,000. Implementing that solution would require some more significant modifications to some of the existing drainage structures in that median as well as removal of some of the trees in the median. So here's what staff recommended. Again, it's the hybrid left turn lane. The pavement would be widened to accommodate a 10-foot left turn lane. You can see it on the diagram there, a 12-foot through lane and then two-foot paved shoulders on each side. Because of the widening of the pavement, we'd have to install some concrete rip wrap, which is kind of that crosshatch section on the diagram there. And we would also have to extend one of the corrugated metal pipe culverts going underneath the median because we don't want that concrete rip wrap to interfere with that culvert. The overall length of this hybrid left turn lane is about 100 feet, which should be able to stack at least three or four cars making that left turn lane. And again, this avoids some of those modifications needed to, to the drainage structure, which is, right? Guess it's right there. And removal of trees. I do have, I know it's not part of the presentation or in the packet, but I do have another exhibit showing the full left turn lane. Amanda, do you mind pull it up really quickly? It's in the presentations folder. Yes, that's correct. Thank you very much, Mandy. So the, the length of the full left turn lane is estimated to be about 250 feet. This would enable us to stack about maybe eight cars making that left turn lane. Turning movement, again, we have a 10-foot turn lane, a 12-foot through lane and two-foot paved shoulders. And there'd be a lot of, a lot more impact to the drainage structures and the trees in the median in this area. That was really my last slide and I'd be willing to take any questions from the council at this time.
Do you have a question?
So is there an actual safety issue that a dedicated left turn lane would solve? Or are we just trying to avoid potential safety issues in the future because of the volume of cars?
Well, the criteria warrant a left turn lane and I think based on the crash, crash history over the 10 years, several of those crashes could have been avoided if we did have a left turn lane.
And then if, if there is a dedicated left turn lane and cars are stacked and then you still have vehicles headed eastbound, if you have people trying to exit front gate, is there going to be a site issue? In other words, if you're exiting front gate and, and you're looking to your right because you want to go eastbound on Fair Oaks Parkway, you're going to have stacked cars that are now blocking your view of the lane that's going.
The lane that's going eastbound. Does that make sense?
I, I think so. Mike, do you want to address that?
Yeah, so they, they should have to yield anyway to right away on the parkway. So they shouldn't be exiting.
They should, but you always have those cars that'll, they'll go through, they'll stick their nose out because they can't see and then bang, accident.
Yes, sir. No, and, and we're not changing the configuration of the intersection of how it operates today. We are recommending a left turn lane because we did catch some drone footage and we got some other footage on the ground. And there are vehicles that are getting pretty close. There's some near misses with trying to go around and use the shoulder and driving through the pavement. So we felt from a safety standpoint, you know, there's actually 113 total crashes over the last 10 years in this general vicinity. We narrowed that down to about 23 that were applicable towards the intersection. And of those seven would have been completely avoided because of this setup. So I think the gentleman earlier mentioned those numbers. I just wanted to clarify that. We're not saying 100% of them are, would be prevented. We're trying to be proactive here.
And in your observation, in the peak hours for the folks that were trying to turn left into front gate, did you observe any sort of significant backups of cars stacking, wanting to turn left that were maybe impeding a lot of the traffic that were trying to maintain eastbound?
Turning into front gate?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah. At times, I mean, there was even a school bus at one point. We had, that queue was going back quite a bit. I was surprised when I saw the initial numbers at how high it was, especially in the afternoon, as Grant mentioned.
Thanks.
And again, this is kind of going back to last council meeting where we're not increasing the amount of traffic or people stopped waiting to turn left. So if there's trouble seeing past them, right? They're going to be there regardless of whether they have a turning lane to sit in or not. But my question is, I don't, I didn't, I'll look through mine again. I don't see any numbers for this, any cost associated. And maybe I'm just a dummy and missed it, but I heard 90,000 for the partial and 200,000 for the. Are we having to move lines or is there like a big drainage impact or?
So the, the full left turn is more than twice as long as the hybrid left turn lane. The cost for the hybrid left turn lane, we estimated at about 90,000. And the cost for the full left turn lane, we estimated to be about 215,000 or so.
And are we having to move lines? Are we having to reconfigure drainage to get this done?
Correct.
Where's the cost?
Can you, can you tell me where the cost is coming in? Right. We're going to have to extend some culverts and we're going to have to relocate some head walls to accomplish a full left turn lane.
Not here at 90,000, but maybe I will when we get down, down the road a little bit.
Yeah, just, just to elaborate on that, so you got the cost of the additional asphalt, obviously the additional taper.
Asphalt's nothing.
No, I know, but that's, I think it was 37,000 total just for the asphalt. On top of that, that culvert structure, the hybrid option completely avoids it. Once we start widening into that culvert structure, you've got your head wall, you've got safety aspects of people falling off, potentially if your pavement's too close to it. So we've got to extend the culvert structure. We've got to redo the whole entire head wall. All of our slopes now become greater than a three to one on the backside. So we'll have to add concrete rip wrap. You got re-grading. You get into tree removals, you get into prep right away. We have to add guard rail as well. The numbers just go through the roof for that extension. That's why we went with a hybrid because we felt like we could, we could increase safety here, maybe take an incremental approach versus going out there with the, the full 250 feet, which is a lot more expensive.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
So if we were to do the hybrid, to make sure I, I understand, so we're talking about a paved turn lane to the left on the hybrid of about 100 feet approximately, is that correct?
Approximately.
And that handles three to four cars, right? If, if we did that and later we determined that that's not sufficient, if we decided to go from a, you know, from the hybrid to the full, is that something that we could extend and deal with the additional cost? Or do we have to destroy and take down what we've already done and redo everything?
No, you definitely could incrementally add to the, the hybrid left turn lane.
So we could start there, see how it works. And if that solves a problem, then we, we've done a good job solving that problem. But if, in the case that it doesn't, and it sounds like this is only at peak hours we're running into this problem. Because during the normal days, I mean, I travel that all the time as well, there's usually one or two cars turning. And yeah, and I go around on the, on the shoulder as well. And I never go in the dirt and I drive a truck, so I'm not sure who's going in the dirt. But, okay, so we could do the hybrid now. And if it's insufficient, we could extend it and deal with the additional drainage down, down the road, correct?
That's correct. We could.
This was a TSAC. So this is another instance where, you know, somebody came here with a traffic problem and we said, all right, you guys, you go build a hoop and then you jump through that hoop and then you come back and talk to us, right? And that, that's how this all started, more or less. Now they've jumped through the hoop and now we're here, so I'm.
I think this one, it was presented at TSAC, but I don't know if this recommendation was ever, this ever go back to TSAC?
It did not go back to TSAC. It was one of three requests, like the gentleman earlier tonight said. In June or July, I don't remember which, Carol presented a summary of that meeting and what actions had been taken at the intersection already, the striping, the RPMs. And Carol mentioned the two other recommendations that were requested. TSAC did not act on those. She also mentioned during that, that I had authorized a small survey, which is what you're seeing tonight, to determine if a left turn lane was warranted based on that request. So we, we performed. So we performed the study and we're bringing that back to you tonight for consideration or discussion.
Well, having said that, I would say kudos to TSAC for identifying this problem in Fair Oaks and I'm okay with the hybrid. And like Keith said, I like that he pointed out that, yeah, we can add to it later if it doesn't seem proficient.
What's the time element to get this built from the time you start? How long is it going to take? If you do the hybrid?
I would expect within six months it could be completed.
It'd be under construction for six months?
Oh, are you asking about the duration of construction?
Right, once you start destroying the property, the dirt and laying the asphalt, how long would that take from the time you kick that off?
Quick, yeah, no more than a month.
Month, okay.
Will there be impacts to eastbound traffic?
We would try to maintain through traffic while we work on the shoulder and the median to the max extent possible.
And then looking at that map, is if, is there enough room in the median? The space with the up and down arrows? Is there enough space in that median if you're in that left turn lane and there is a car stopped headed south to navigate that turnaround and then queue up in the northbound lane? I'm assuming there's enough space all there?
Is it wide enough?
Yeah, is it wide enough for someone to navigate around potential traffic that's coming south?
Yes, yes.
And would there have to be yield signs there or is that self-explanatory?
No, it's understood.
Okay.
The right away. Or you would hope that's understood. Yeah, I know, someone mentioned earlier the types of drivers we have.
Yeah.
We can look at some supplemental signing to enhance safety for sure.
I had the same question that Ruben raised initially is what problem is it that we're trying to solve with the left turn lane? Because I'm not sure that this, you know, what's safety concern? And I'm not sure it really impacts traffic in and out of front gate.
So there is an additional safety benefit we haven't really mentioned. If you look closely, and this is, I know this is the full version, but it's the same thing as the hybrid, it's extended. But the traffic on the northbound lanes there going right across the sheet, we're shifting everyone out slightly, we're still allowing a two-foot buffer, but that provides somewhat of a safety element. If someone does kind of peek their nose out and try to get through there, cars are already shifted over by virtue of the pavement markings. So there's a little bit more of that five-foot shoulder, there's a little safety element there to give them a little bit more refuge, if you will, as they're pulling out. We did not notice any sight distance issues. I understand earlier someone brought up mailbox in particular. I took another close look at some of the photos we looked at and I don't see that as a true sight distance issue. It could be optimized. But, yeah, essentially the, to answer your question, Mayor, is the main thing is, and when we initially got the call from Grant, it was kind of like, hey, let's look at this, does it warrant a left turn lane? It was kind of a simple question. As we went out to the field and did our analysis, we noticed that there were just a lot of what I call near misses. People trying to get around, making their own maneuvers, getting creative. And we felt like if this were a brand-new development coming in tomorrow, one hundred percent we would require per code that they put in a left turn lane. So I don't know if that changes your perspective at all. I know it's already in place and pretty much fully built.
So the issue that I see is what, so if we say the parkway is running north and south and so northbound would be the lower lanes on the picture, correct? Northbound Fair Oaks Parkway is the lanes at the bottom. And so what this really resolves to me is it prevents rear-end collisions.
For the hundred and seventy peoples that are stopping today.
Right.
Yes, sir.
And so, and then related to that, now we're shifting traffic in towards the median with a hybrid left turn.
We're giving them refuge because there is a significant amount of traffic coming southbound. So they're waiting already today, so now they have a safe place to wait, so refuge.
So as we're moving them into the median on the northbound side, now when they pull up to the intersection or the crossover, we have shortened that distance for people coming out of front gate wanting to head northbound?
Yes, they, front gate should have the yield no matter what. They have the yield to that left turn coming in, they should not be poking out. But either way, we're increasing safety and the good news is that we only counted eleven vehicles making that movement. A hundred and, I think, sixty or a hundred and seventy vehicles are making a right turn towards I-ten. Not a whole lot of people are coming out left. So yes, it is a concern, it's an concern today. We're not necessarily exacerbating that issue.
Yeah, I just think it creates an issue with cars that are coming out of front gate wanting to go northbound and cars in the hybrid left turn lane.
What would be different as opposed to what they're doing right now if they had? Because we're not adding any cars and we're not removing any asphalt for them to sit in. So what would be different from how it is right now in regards to your problem? Or if we give them this turn-in lane?
So to me, if they're in the turn lane, they're out of the lane of traffic, which was the safety concern that we're talking about. But they have shifted now inward, so they're taking up whatever that volume, the width of the hybrid lane off of the median. And so those vehicles coming out of front gate and wanting to go northbound, their stop lane now to turn northbound has to be short of where the hybrid lane starts. So you're probably talking, I don't know, ten feet, is that what it was?
So you're saying that cars that are turning left into front gate right now are not sitting in the median?
Could be.
Well, so if they're not doing it now, but they would do it with the new paint, is what you're saying? I think.
Well, so if they're in the hybrid left turn lane, which now for cars coming out of front gate, we have shortened that distance by ten feet for them to turn to the northbound. So their stop lane is going to be, you're coming out of front gate, their stop line is going to have to be short of the hybrid left turn lane. Can I explain this?
Yeah.
I've seen two, I mean, three at the most, but...
And me to clarify...
Are you talking about sitting in the median? I'm talking about waiting to turn.
Yeah.
I've only really ever seen one
Yeah, same.
at a time. And if one will still fit there, then there's no real difference. Yeah.
If it helps, Mayor, we're not adding ten more feet of pavement into the median. That would take up like half of the median.
So we're going to use the...
There's some existing shoulders that's going to be part of that when we re-stripe it.
Okay, I just think it's a concern, but... And I'm not sure what we're looking at here is really addressed the problem. What's coming, what the front gate residents have depicted is the problem, but I don't know, maybe y'all can help.
If we had a hundred and seventy vehicles coming out of front gate, one hundred percent what you're saying would be a problem. We have eleven in a whole hour. The problem is the left turner's going into front gate and that's the safety concern that we're solving, that's the safety concern we witnessed.
Well, you know, it doesn't cost anything to send us back to TSAC if it's going to give us some confidence to making sure that this is what they want.
Not sure going back to TSAC adds anything here. I'm just thinking is we've got the issue on the table, we've got the research, we've got a recommendation. I don't know what TSAC would do different than what we have here.
I agree.
Who, the front gate residents?
One didn't want, one...
One not and one for. And I don't know that that's going to ever change. I think you're going to have some for and some...
One wanted to wait because he was just certain that we were going to put a stop sign there, right? Like, that's why he wanted to wait. He said, wait, don't do anything yet, let's see if we can get a stop sign in. So, I mean, that's kind of a different animal.
Chris Stepke from the TSAC. If I remember correctly, the issue was the cars trying to pass on the shoulder. And I think he was thinking a stop sign would be the solution.
That was it because
Part of it.
You remember the guy said that there was no room to pass cars? And Emily said, hey, wait a minute, I pass cars on the right right there, like, I know there's room. So that was the issue that they brought to us.
Yeah, and then this does at least somewhat mitigate that passing issue by creating a little bit more width for those turning left.
Like the mayor said, is I could, we think we're solving one issue, but then are we creating a separate issue? Is, or are we just shifting a safety issue from, you know, one type to another type? And that, just because of the configuration of the size of that median? I kind of see it the same way he does.
I don't. I think we have cars that are in the median as it is now. I don't think having a turn lane there with cars stopped is going to really make it any different. I mean, you're going to have to stop and look anyways. I know that there is going to be cars to your right, but there's plenty of room.
Well, see, I don't know if there is plenty of room because even where the yellow dividing line is in the median, when I see cars turning left into front gate, they're cutting that corner anyway. Like, they're almost taking up the whole median, they're not actually, you know, waiting to turn once they're clear of that yellow line and making a, you know, full left turn. They're kind of, you know, smoothing that turn.
But are you talking about the issue being if there's a car, if there are two cars in the median, one going into front gate and one having just come out and one's trying to go straight across into front gate or turn left or whatever and the other one coming out of front gates trying to get up the parkway to like go to the club or something? Okay, you have two cars stopped there, it still doesn't change anything then from what it is now. You still, if there's cars backed up there, you still have to stop and wait and look and make sure no one's coming around those cars.
Yeah, but when you, if you have cars queued up or stacked up in the left turn-only lane, you still have a full other straight lane that has the right away and so now...
But if you have cars stopped in the turn lane, you have the right away if you're in the median. So you can be even with those cars that are in the turn lane. So you can easily see around it, like, you've got that extra space to be able to see down the parkway to your right.
Cars that are coming off the parkway turning left would have the right of way.
Yeah.
If you are there in the median first, right, if you come across and nobody's there turning, I mean, they're not going to crash into you.
What about a clover like they have on the interstates where there's a big bridge going over the...
Do that. Here's my thing, we have a... Roundabout, roundabout. More stop sign. I was putting some speed bumps. We have left turn lanes all over the place, all across the world. People know how to use them. I don't think that this is going to be creating a whole bunch of new problems. I think the problem that it's alleviating, that it's intended to alleviate, will be pretty much solved for ninety-nine percent of the day. And the, you know, small, small, small percentage of time that you're going to encounter a situation like this, I think ninety-nine percent of the time, in all likelihood, you're going to be fine. Because people are going to not just drive like maniacs because you can't because it's too small and too short.
God, what are y'all looking forward tonight with this? Either to move forward or...
Right, so there's a few, I mean, that's the end goal, yes. So if there was a clear council direction, and I'm not sure if I have that right now, we would, we, it's possibly, we could include this in the budget process as an amendment. Barring that, we can postpone this and take it up as a consideration item post-budget adoption.
I think the one consensus that there is that if we are going to do this, it'd be the hybrid.
I agree, a hundred percent agree.
I'm just not fully committed that we're not creating another safety issue. That's the only concern I have. And I don't think I've explained it very well to understand it.
You got a laser pointer? We got, no, I'm serious, we got a laser pointer, right?
Greg, I kind of, I understand what you're saying, you and Ruben both. And you don't want to, so do we just live with this safety issue that we know is a safety issue, that we know has created crashes, that we know we can eliminate by doing this? On the
I just want to know for sure.
Maybe there might be another one?
No, no, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
I just want to know we're not creating another safety issue.
What if you put a yellow strip of paint right there at the end of the turn lane? I mean, that would add at least a little bit more clarity to people that they're not supposed to be in the median? And just make it look like you're supposed to stop at that yellow strip of paint before you take that left turn? Would that ease your concern?
The only true solution is, and we talked about that earlier, Grant, is to have a hooded left to where you can't make a left out. You can only make a left there and there's a median there blocking anybody making a left out. That's the only way you can prevent crashes, but we know that's going to create all sorts of downstream and upstream impacts. So I wouldn't recommend that. And I know it was discussed earlier about a four-way stop. Legally, you can't just place a four-way stop, there has to be certain criteria that is met. And unfortunately, we're not meeting that criteria here. So this is kind of the best we can do of what we have. We could always reanalyze after, hopefully, if we do move forward with it, we can reanalyze later and see how things are trending. We could always make changes again to go back, right? We're just, we're adding a strip of pavement, we're not touching trees, we're not touching culverts, striping. I think given the ninety thousand dollar number that we have is pretty conservative. I think there's some cost there that we can minimize. We're just trying to give you guys a ballpark figure to incorporate within your budget. But we'd have to go out to get bids and hopefully get some competitive numbers that are better than that.
This was ninety thousand, correct?
Yes, sir.
That's the other point of it is, we have the engineers in this room right now. If we can tell them what to do, we don't have to pay them to do anything else. I mean, if we can figure out your concern, Mayor, not, I'm not saying, I'm not trying to rush you. I'm just trying to help.
I'm just one person. I mean, if everybody else is okay with this, then, well, you're, I mean, you're the mayor, come on.
What are you talking about?
Sometimes we count the votes, the other times we weigh them.
If it makes you feel any better, Mayor, they're doing it today. Everyone out there driving it today is doing exactly what's on the screen. They're building up a left turn lane on their own, they're going into the inside, they're going around the outside. Like, everybody here, including myself, I just drove it on the way over here.
Right.
Everyone's doing it, we're not changing that. So we're not changing the, what's occurring at all. We're not, we're not, we're not creating this exacerbated situation. We're trying to provide some alleviation and enhance safety as much as we can.
So Mike, so the difference is that hybrid left turn has been added to the inside of the median of the northbound traffic, right?
Correct.
And so that infringes on the median lane for people coming out of front gate.
Slightly, yes. I don't know if we can zoom in on that, but it's very minor. The widening we're doing is, I believe it's like five feet. See that strip that's a darker shade? Yeah, right there. That right there is actually concrete, that's to try to avoid that structure. But it's below that where the white, yeah, right there. That's the only pavement we're adding in this stretch. And we're reducing the lane width that's out there today, which is a much wider single lane, to a twelve-foot lane you see on the bottom, a two-foot outside shoulder versus the five-foot shoulder we have today. And then a ten-foot inside lane with a ten-foot. So we're just reconfiguring and giving people a place to sit and have refuge.
So how much, how much are we adding to the inside median of the northbound lane to create this hybrid lane?
I believe it's five feet and that's usually the minimum we can. I need to add up the numbers there. It'd be the difference between the fourteen, five, and so that's nine, twenty-one minus...
So not substantial, but if the stop bar was at, right at the parkway, you're now going to have to move this five feet back so it doesn't interfere with the hybrid lane.
There should not be a stop bar today, sir. There is no stop bar.
I got it, there's not one there.
Correct.
But if you're coming out of front gate and you're going to go across the median and go northbound, there is a stop location, which is usually right as you enter the parkway.
So anyone coming out, if there's anyone queuing up for left turns in, you should not be coming out, period. You have to yield to the parkway. So we're not creating a new conflict from what's out there today. If someone's sitting there waiting to turn because of people coming towards I-ten and they're waiting to queue to turn left, you should not take a chance and go out there at all. You should stay at the stop bar, that's the law. The minute that left turn is cleared and everybody's cleared, then you can go out and do whatever you want to do. That's...
Right, so the only time your situation would happen is if, like what I was saying, if somebody was already in that median and then somebody came down to turn left after this car has already entered the median.
Yeah, it's no different than any other T intersection we have on the parkway throughout town. Pimlico, Windermere, they're all the same.
So the concern is...
All the time and they wait for traffic to clear. So they, they'd pull out there when there was an opportunity, south... So they, they'd pull out there when there was an opportunity, southbound was open, they'd pull out into the median.
But you wouldn't pull out if there's a vehicle queued right in front of you. You can't. They're, they're literally going to be right in front of you.
Right, right.
So where, where the, uh, where the up and down arrows are, since we don't have a laser pointer, where the up and down arrows are in the median, that whole piece there, that's not getting narrowed, right? It's going to be stayed the same width.
We're not touching that, correct?
So all you've got is just, you're basically taking out some grass and putting some asphalt so the cars can queue up here on the northbound side to turn left into front gate, correct?
Yes, sir.
Five feet, five feet further in on the median.
It's five feet off of the parkway, and then the lane on the northbound side of the parkway is going to go to twelve foot, well, we're going to have two feet shoulder versus a five foot. That's it, right? Is the, is the twelve foot what we have today our normal width of that way?
I believe we have fourteen.
Fourteen, so we're going to lose two feet on that side? Okay.
We're narrowing the lane a bit, yes, sir.
Okay.
But just in, just right there.
Right.
Once you get past there, it's back to the normal size.
Yep, okay.
Five foot by a hundred foot? Is that what you, ballpark? How many yards of material you think it's going to take to build the road up?
Yeah, I don't have the calculations in front of me, sorry.
That's the cost.
Ninety thousand dollars worth.
Ninety thousand dollars worth.
And I, and I said, I think, I think. I think ninety thousand is very conservative, like I said earlier. Our goal is to always give you, we, we want to make sure we give you a number that you guys can budget and hopefully comes in way under, but we, we want to make sure you have the proper, just in case. You never know what.
Okay, understood, and thank you.
Is everybody comfortable with moving forward? Is that what y'all are?
Hybrid.
Hybrid.
You want to show hands?
What do you think, Scott?
Got two, three? Three versus? Just kidding, come on.
I don't want to put you on the spot, I mean.
No, that's okay. I, I mean, I've, I've been sitting here quietly listening and watching and trying to do the math. If, and I, I agree with you, if you do no harm in that aspect of, if we're going to get something, I don't want to create something wrong. But I don't, from what I'm hearing, it doesn't sound like a hybrid is going to be more harm. It sounds to me like it does, it does get people out of the way and it, it can help regulate it. I do also, my concern is on, is on that front, people that exit the front gate. And what's going to happen once we go ahead and expand the, the city, when people are trying to come out and make a left, and also people try to go in. So, and I don't know, I'm not that familiar with that. But I, as I said, if it's going to get cars, I think it would be money to go upstairs if it exceeds, uh, the, the number of crashes that, that would be created. As long as you pay the money. So, Mike, Mike, grab my brain wrapped around here?
Yes, sir.
All right, Dale.
How long is that now? What was the footage on that? A hundred and five feet?
Yes, sir, so that, that measurement starts from the, the location where they would be making the turn back to where, and typically you estimate roughly twenty feet per vehicle, so we might be able to squeeze maybe five vehicles total in there. And that includes a gap in between as well.
Without the gap, how many cars? Just on the new part?
Three.
Three, okay.
And three, four.
That takes care of most of the traffic.
Will there be a space? If you have three or four vehicles queued up in that left turn lane and they've taken up all the space, will they now be impeding the northbound traffic to where it's going to stop traffic?
It'll be no different than it is today.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
It sounds to me everybody's comfortable with the hybrid moving forward.
Yes.
Okay. There's your answer.
Well, embark down that path and, and you'll get another bite at the apple when this, when this comes for bid.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks for helping to answer some questions. And Grant, appreciate your, appreciate your patience.
That completes, uh, the workshop items that we had tonight on the agenda. Does any council member have any announcements that they'd like to make as part of tonight's meeting?
I'd like to make an announcement. Today, uh, my eighth grandchild was born, a little boy, so.
Eighth?
Yeah. Ellis Graham Roden.
Congratulations.
That's my announcement.
I have a similar announcement.
Okay.
Although I don't have a grandchild, but I do have a child that has a birthday on Saturday, so I would like to wish Sparky a very happy birthday.
Anybody else?
I got a TV.
Um, on September fifteenth, which is a week from this upcoming Monday, uh, we'll review the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget. As part of that meeting, we'll have a special call council meeting on Monday, the fifteenth. Yeah, the fifteenth, uh, we'll conduct a public hearing on the budget and council will have the first of two votes on the budget, well, the first, yeah, the first two votes on the budget and first two votes on the tax rate. Uh, the proposed tax, the proposed tax rate right now is twenty-eight point five cents uh, per hundred dollars valuation. Uh, it's the same tax rate that we had last year. And then while, council will meet on September eighteenth, and that's when we'll take final action on the budget. Uh, another announcement, City of Fair Oaks Ranch Police Department invites you and your furry friends out to the Pup Timber event this Saturday. Nine to twelve here at City Hall. And it's all events for dogs and cats, to get them registered, get their shots, get your picture taken, just a good time to come out and be a part of the event. And then just, uh, for recognition, the Four-Haw, I think they've gotten the information out pretty well. Their fiftieth celebration, fiftieth year anniversary, uh, Four-Haw is this Saturday, the sixth of September. And, uh, you know, Four-Haw was the governing body that, uh, full of volunteers that really built what turned a ranch into a city. And so it's their efforts that really got us where we're at today. And so if you have an opportunity, reach out to the Four-Haw, the Four-Haw president, or stop by the building over there and just, uh, congratulate them on fifty years of service to our city. Uh, Scott, that's all I had. Anything else?
Nothing further.
Any item that any council member would like added to a future agenda? Yes, sir?
Uh, I'd like to consider us, uh, I'd like us to consider adding a, uh, since we're talking about the parkway, it may be a parkway beautification committee to look at some of the landscaping possibilities we could do to improve the parkway. I know we do a pretty good job now, but I think it'd be good to have a, kind of like we did the Gateway Committee, have a citizen involvement and somebody from council to help come up with some ideas, maybe to create some better, uh, more landscaping to enhance now that we've got our Gateway feature coming online and we're really trying to beautify things, to see what options we have and, and what it would cost maybe to do some improvements.
Anybody else? Um, okay. Uh, we will convene into executive session tonight pursuant to section five, five, one point, one zero one of the Open Meetings Act. Uh, the Texas Government Code of Quorum of the Governing Body hereby convenes in closed session under section five, five, one point zero seven one consultation with the attorney, and this will be specifically discussed on legal requirements necessary to contract for firing emergency medical services. And that will be the only item that we go into executive session for tonight. Uh, as part of this, we need counsel, city manager, city attorney, uh, chief of police, and assistant city managers? Okay. Uh, I anticipate forty-five minutes in executive session. And so if y'all would like to stick around after that, and Amanda, I have the time now is eight twenty-five, and we are into executive session.
Can you hear me okay? Amanda, I have the time now is 9:21 and we are back in open session. During timeframe that we were in executive session, council did have one decision made that needs to be considered back in open session. And that consideration item is consideration and possible action authorizing the mayor and/or city manager to execute an inter-local agreement for fire and emergency medical services with Bear County Emergency District, Service District Number Four. And Scott, I believe you have a presentation related to this?
Yes, sir, I do. All right. We'll do our best. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Scott Hughes and gay city manager. And tonight, quickly review the history and proposed terms for an inter-local agreement for fire and emergency medical services with Bear County Emergency Services District Number Four. The council has seen proposed drafts of this agreement already and you have a draft in front of you for your consideration. This is the culmination of a few months of negotiation and really a couple of years of study about current status and future of the city's emergency services. So tonight, I'm going to provide primarily for you all and for public consumption as well, a brief history of how the city provides this vital public service and will briefly cover the negotiation that has occurred between the city and EST four and how we got to where we are. So, brief history of the city's fire and first response. The city does not own or operate its own fire department. Most people know that. I know the people in this room know that, some may not. But going all the way back to the city's founding in 1988 through 2021, the city contracted for fire and first response services with what was then the Leon Springs Volunteer Fire Department. And actually, through a little bit of digging, I find it actually dates back to 1987. Before the city's fight, the then town of Fair Oaks Ranch North had entered into agreement first before the city consolidated and then entered an agreement with the VFD at that time. During that timeline, in 2007, Bear County established the Emergency Services District Number Four as a taxing jurisdiction for fire services in the district jurisdiction, and they've been operating since that time. And starting in 2021, the city entered its first formal agreement for four years with EST four rather than the Leon Springs Fire Department. And that contract in the first year was for, as you can see on the screen, about $363,000, escalating to about $528,000, $529,000 that the city is paying in the current year for fire service. These were the terms provided by EST four to the city at that time. And as you can see, that contract did increase about a little over 45% during the life of the current term, which expires at the end of the fiscal year. On the EMS side, the city way back when first contracted with Kendall County for many years and later with Acadian Ambulance Services, which provided EMS services for most of the last, at least 15, probably 20 years, I couldn't trace it all the way back to its origin, but it's been a while. The last revision that the city had for EMS services with Acadian Ambulance at that time, the last time that changed was in 2014. And the terms of that agreement for ambulance services was $73,500 annually. And the provider, then Acadian Ambulance, also retained all billing revenue that they collected for providing that service to residents. During most of this term, Acadian was also the Bear County provider. So they provided for University Hospital in Bear County, which actually maintains the contract and provided for most of the unincorporated territories of Bear County, including EST four until early this year. Acadian lost its contract with Bear County at the end of last year. Bear County opted to choose Allegiance Mobile Health as its new ambulance provider. So at the end of last year, Acadian notified the city that it would terminate its agreement at the end of the contract, and that contract expired in April of 2025 this year. So, starting on the first of this year, EST four was already gearing up to provide its own EMS service to its district. That service started January 1st of this year. So the city negotiated and entered a temporary agreement from April of this year to September of this year to provide the service in that gap essentially. So we now have basically two separate agreements, one for fire and first response, one for EMS, both with EST four, both expire at the end of this month, April 2025. So, for the last several months, the city and EST four have been negotiating, obviously, a new agreement to combine and consolidate those services into one. Obviously, the goaling for both parties was to secure a long-term agreement between EST four and the city and obviously to provide reliable, responsive and continuous essential public safety service for the city. Also to provide a stable source of revenue to support EST four in its operations and expansion plans as they grow. And to continue that longstanding partnership that we've had, first with the Leon Springs Volunteer Fire Department and now with EST four. The city received a formal proposal from EST four in June of this year. And in the same month, a couple of weeks later, the city council formed a fire EMS committee to convene and negotiate a new agreement with EST four. And those negotiations have been ongoing from basically July until now. So let's talk a little bit about the negotiation process itself. I'll start with EST four's position in negotiation. EST four's primary position has been that Fair Oaks Ranch should pay its fair share for fire and EMS services. And the district defined fair share or parity, tax parity, as effectively adopting the property tax rate that EST four adopts in its budget annually. For reference, EST four recently adopted its tax rate for the next fiscal year, fiscal year '25, '26, and they adopted a rate at roughly six and a half cents per $100 evaluation. For comparison, the city in its current, two contracts combined, fire and EMS, is paying just over $600,000 for those services in the current year. And that equates to, in the city's valuation, roughly 2.15 cents per $100 evaluation. EST four said there'd be no change in its current service provision. And just for reference, while the adopted rate for next year with EST four is, like I mentioned, about six and a half percent, the strategic plan for EST four calls for that rate to go up to about nine cents in the next five years' time period as their financial model projects. The city's position in this is, the city has stipulated from the beginning that the city is currently receiving a good deal for the services. It was EST four's agreement in 2021. The city didn't strong-arm anyone into it, but nonetheless, it is currently an inexpensive service for the service that is received. Again, we have maintained that the contract has increased 50% during that term, so the contract has been escalating throughout. And the city has also maintained that the service is not exactly equal. Response times are longer to the city than they are to the district by nature of where these stations are located. And the district's own numbers will bear that out. Most importantly, the city has mentioned that, again, while we acknowledge that that we are not paying the same rate that EST residents are, the city cannot triple its expenditures effectively in one year. The city is subject to voter approval rates and as is the district. And to make that up in basically one year's time is not sustainable from a city service perspective or from a tax collection perspective, subject to, we're constrained by city law. SB two restricts with how much the city can raise its taxes in one year. So the city has been seeking a path to phase in the growth towards parity with EST four over a number of years. The city also offered during the negotiation to renovate our fire station number three, or what they call 420, during that process to help offset some of EST's long-term capital costs, including a new station. That option was declined, and the city also requested representation on the EST board, which was also declined, and the EST cited state law prohibiting non-district residents from serving on the board. So where are we? Where have we landed? This is the primary terms of the deal. The proposal before you is a 10-year agreement. The expiring agreement that we have right now was for four years. This would be a 10-year deal. It provides for automatic renewal unless it's terminated by either party. That's the same as what's in the current agreement. Any termination would require at least one year notification. That is the same as what's in the current agreement. It requires quarterly payments from the city to the EST. Again, that's the same as what's in the current agreement. And for response time, the contract is listed as a goal of under 10 minutes. This is not a hard target established in the contract, but it does represent the current averages that EST four is maintaining. And finally, it does call for improved response times later in the contract once a station location is identified by the district and once the city achieves that tax parity rate, which would be effective in year five. This is the proposed payment schedule for the term. Again, this is a total agreement over 10 years, which would total out to be an estimated, and I have to stress estimated, about $25 million over 10 years. Excuse me. Obviously, this is significantly higher than the $600,000 per year the city currently pays. The first four years would be set by contract, as you can see on the screen. And these allow the city to catch up or phase in that parity rate that we talked about while staying within the voter approval thresholds that the city is subject to, while also not drastically cutting city services in order to maintain it. Starting in year five, which is fiscal year 2029, '30, the city would be effectively obligated to budget the amount equivalent to the adopted EST four tax rate. So these last six numbers on your screen are estimates based on EST four's projected growth rates between both the tax bases, their estimates for the tax base of both the EST four and the city, and their projected growth in the tax rate. So these are their estimates. They are subject to updating when we get to those years. But based on current conditions and projections, these are what the estimated figures would be in those final six years. Again, the EST four is scheduled to increase to about nine cents per $100 in the next five to six years. to six years. So that's the quick and dirty on this agreement. Again, the conclusion then is the city has been paying proportionally less than ESD4 for the services. Both parties agree on this. The current contract was agreed to by both parties, and both parties agree on this as well. The proposed agreement before you provides a phase-in of four years towards that parity tax rate, over four years with parity starting in year five. And for the city, the long-term annual cost will increase from, again, about $600,000 in the current year to about $3.3 million estimated by year 10. This does provide, again, an estimated $25 million in revenue to ESD4 over the 10-year term. And after exploring multiple options, starting with our fire and EMS study a few years ago and coming until now, we believe this is the best option available to the city. So I think with that...
Any questions from the council? Any questions from anyone here tonight? I think we're good. Seth, do you mind?
Seth Mitchell, resident. I have a question for Representative ESD4. Scott said that you'll have as a goal to raise your tax rate to 9 cents. What is the reason for that?
Ron Haygood, President of the Board of ESD4. The reason is, is the growth of this area. And there's only two ESDs out of 12 ESDs in Bear County that have a lower tax rate than 10 cents today. That's the state. You cannot go more than 10 cents. Right now, at 6.4, we're the lowest of any ESD in Bear County. The only other ESD is ESD3, that's on the other side of Camp Bullis area. And they're at almost 8 cents, and they're going to 10 cents because, in the next couple of years, because they're starting EMS also. We're the only, there are only three ESDs in Bear County that does EMS. The other one is two and seven. Their budgets are about, well, sevens is about three times ours, and two is about five times our budgets. They have a lot of box stores. Their sales tax is unbelievable. So, in order to stay abreast, and the cost that it costs us, a fire truck, we just bought two fire trucks that were delivered a couple of months ago. They cost, and they took us two years to get them. It cost us $950,000 apiece. We have a ladder truck on order, and it costs $2 million. We have initial drawings of the next fire station, and estimates is around $13 million for that next fire station. A basic fireman with EMT training, that's $110,000 apiece. So that's just the cost of doing business today, unfortunately. We, the problem I have, quite frankly, is I have to go to ESD4 residents and say that Fair Oaks Ranch is going to slowly get to their same tax rate. The question about 420, right now, I don't have the manpower or the equipment to put anybody in 420. In a few years down the road, I can't, hopefully that we will be able to. But I can't do that now because I can't look to my ESD4 residents and say, I'm going to put manpower and equipment in a fire station that would only service Fair Oaks Ranch, and them not, and Fair Oaks Ranch not paying the tax rate. So I have to do that. So when we go around to the HOAs, hopefully I won't get too many questions, but we will get there. We look to other cities around the area. Javino Park, Castle Hills, et cetera. They both have one fire station, two trucks and an ambulance. And their tax rate last year, just for the fire and rescue, was $2.4 million for that. And essentially, their police force and fire and rescue is a one-for-one ratio. For this next year, under this contract, the ratio between fire and rescue and police is four to one. And so we don't think this is, this is out of bounds. But we have to grow with this area. We have to, we have to get better. Our timelines have to get better, is to serve ESD4 residents and Fair Oaks Ranch residents. So that's the reason that we're slowly increasing the tax rate. Does that answer your question, sir?
Well, the first part, thank you for that response. And I agree that the area is growing and that your capabilities probably need to grow with it. The first part of your response, and I'm not going to be argumentative with you, but the first, what I heard was, we're going to 9 cents because everyone else is. That's what I heard. Because you didn't really articulate with that extra dollars, what you're going to do with those extra dollars. And so we don't need to have that discussion here, but that's what I heard. Counsel, just as a citizen, I think Scott laid it out well. To me, we got a good deal for many, many years. I see the argument that they're making. It is unusual in Texas. ESDs are kind of unusual in that there are appointed boards, and usually appointed boards don't set tax rates without any supervision. We have that in this case. There are, the law does provide that you can have an ESD that covers more than one county, which we could probably do here if ESD4 was amenable, which would require an elected ESD board. So I don't know if that's something y'all want to work on in the future, but as far as the deal that y'all reached tonight, I see that it's as fair as it can be. It's cheaper than standing up a department ourselves. And it's an agreement, and agreements can change. So thank you for the people that worked on it, and I hope that you'll pass it.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, Seth. And Ron, thank you for your comments, too.
I do also have a question, maybe to follow up on what Mr. Mitchell asked. Is your budget running a surplus right now or a deficit?
We have a reserve, emergency reserves, similar to what the city has. And what the Texas ESD Association, called SAFDI, recommends, it's at least six months payment for O and M and everything else. Right now, we have around four months, so we're trying to build that a little bit. We need to build that because you never know, things can happen. And so we have to, we have to grow that reserve. But essentially, we're looking to grow the force. We are looking to hire three to four new firemen, paramedics, this next year, and that's a continuing process. And so we have to look, especially for lead times on equipment. We have an ISO study coming in later in the month to take a look at ISO across the board in District 4. I think Fair Oaks Ranch is looking to do something similar to that. And that kind of tells you where you need to put a fire station. Essentially, you look to put a fire station around five miles away from each other. And so that's what, that's what this guy's going to do, and also to look at how we can continue to improve our ISO rating. The problem we have with our ISO rating in District 4 is that there's a lot of areas without water. Even a lot of the HOAs that have hydrants are not equipped to handle a fire truck. And so that hampers us a lot. And so we have to look to, in order to help improve that. Going back to the gentleman's deal on, you know, I'm a taxpayer. I don't want, I don't want to friggin' raise taxes. I mean, I'm having to pay those taxes. But in order to provide the service that the citizens, to include the citizens of Fair Oaks Ranch, deserves, we have to have the money to do that. I only get money two ways, and that's ed velorem, which is property tax and sales tax. I get 1.5% on sales tax. Thank goodness for Amazon. Amazon is our biggest sales tax person, even does the HEB down there. So that's, we have to have money. That's the only money that we can get, and we have to try to get the biggest bang for the buck to do that.
So with the increase that we'll be paying, I think you said you're looking to hire two, three, or more fire EMS personnel this year?
This year.
In the fiscal year or in the calendar year?
Well, it's fiscal year, so starting in October. And so we've already got the word out to do that.
And are y'all fully staffed now, or do you have vacant positions in addition to your net increase?
Well, we have, we have full-timers, we have part-timers, and then we have, I think, left, I think we have four volunteers left. We're not hiring any volunteers anymore. It's just not economical for us to do that. But we have part-timers right now. We've got, last I heard, we had 37 full-timers and about 10 or 12 part-timers.
And is that, in that question, do you have any vacancies right now you're trying to fill that's already included in your budget?
There are a couple of vacancies that we're filling. I'll be frank, when we first started EMS, and I'm just telling it like it is, the fire chief at that time wanted to hire paramedics just to ride the boxes, which are the ambulances, and not worry about fire. So when Acadian lost the contract, a bunch of those paramedics were looking for jobs, and so we hired several of those paramedics. They weren't working, they weren't used to working in a firehouse, quite frankly. And so, so we have quit doing that. We need, we need to be able to crossflow. If I need some people on a fire truck, then that paramedic goes there. Any fire truck that goes out also has a paramedic on it. So if you get an ambulance that's got a paramedic, at least one paramedic, sometimes two, a paramedic and EMT kind of thing, but even on all the fire trucks, there's a paramedic on those fire trucks. So there's additional support if required. So, so the people we're now hiring are firemen and paramedics, so we could crossflow them.
Maybe an odd question, but you keep referencing your HOAs. What's that have to do with anything?
Well, because we started last year going around to HOAs to explain to them what ESD is. As we've kind of noted before, most people don't have a friggin' idea of what an ESD is. And so what we're trying to do is market what an ESD is, that we use tax money, this is what we get, this is how we use it, this is how we spend it, and this is what we're looking for in the future. So to get, to get out, to get that message out to the community, we have a lot of HOAs in District 4. And so the easiest way to get to a lot of people are to go through those annual meetings. And then we not only give them what's going on, et cetera, where we're going along the way, but they're able to ask questions to us.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So a while ago, there were, there was a sign for the new fire station that was going up across 10, just down from the QT.
Right.
Is there, two questions. One, is that still part of the plan? And two, if it is, would that station also service this area?
Absolutely. We bought that land because land was becoming scarce on I-10. And with the growth out I-10 and the traffic on I-10, et cetera, we looked to do that. When I mentioned the next fire station, because we've looked at the land and we've got it mapped out, and we've got preliminary architectural drawing of that, that's that $13 million that I talked about, if we, if and when we put that fire station there. But I don't have, I don't have the money for the fire station, but also it's a three-legged stool. I'm not going to build a fire station until I have the manpower and the equipment to put in that fire station. So I, we have to make sure that as we build that fire station, we're able to move people and equipment into that fire station as we build it.
And so I guess my question is, with this long-term contract, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Over 10 years, do you foresee that station coming to fruition within that timeframe?
Yes, absolutely. We will have a third fire station in three to four years. That's the plan. Yes, sir.
So I'm on the committee, right?
Right.
So I already have most of my questions answered and have already aired most of my grievances. But I would say that going through this, once you get your report back from your, you know, your third-party review, that you share some of that, you know, your ISO ratings and plan that you have to get them up. Just share that with us.
Absolutely.
Let's keep comparing notes.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's, again, it's, we need that, we want that. And so, yes, we're paying a contractor to come in to take a look at that, to see how we can continue to lower that, that ISO rating. Because again, now, some insurance companies use the ISO rating and some don't. So, but it behooves us to focus on that, to help continue to lower that as much as possible.
Yep, let's just keep sharing notes.
Again...
Thank you.
Everything that, everything, every, everything, every number that we have come up with, we have shared with Fair Oaks Ranch. We've been open kimono, as we used to say in the military. We've showed, we've showed you everything that we have.
Did you say that you were, your fire station would be up and running in three years? Is that what you just said?
I said, hopefully, in three to four years. Yes, sir. That's... That's but I got to have that three legged stool. So but yes, that's that's what we hope to do.
Anybody else? Good, Scott, Jonathan, Dale, Ruben?
Keith.
Thank you.
All right. With that, then, can I get a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and or the city manager to execute the interlocal agreement for fire and EMS services with Bexar County Emergency Services District Number Four? Anybody?
So moved.
Jonathan, in a second? Ruben? Any other discussion from council? Motion on table, all in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved.
Thank you, counsel.
Scott, good discussion. Thank you all. All right, that completes everything we had on the agenda for tonight. Amanda, anything that I missed or anything we need to go back and cover? Scott, anything from from you?
No, sir.
Amanda, the time now is nine fifty seven and we are adjourned.